Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a full house tonight. It's awesome to see all the kids. That is, that's the best part. So, thank you all for being here. Everyone else, thank you for joining us this evening, taking time out of your night to observe our meeting. Members of the public who would like to address the Board on any topic, if you had signed the roster in the back of the room before 6:30, we give anyone who wants to do that a chance to address the Board. Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll, please.
Josh Hitchcock.
Josh is out of town on business and is excused this evening.
Jeannie Orozco.
Present.
Linda Pugh, here. Steve Seibert.
Here.
Naisha Major.
And I don't see Naisha this evening. Well, we have a quorum, so we can have a meeting and officially vote on it. There are three of us, so we're, we're good to go. Have all of you had a chance to review the agenda for this evening?
I have.
Yes.
Yes? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second?
It's been moved by Mrs. Pugh, seconded by Ms. Orozco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. First item of business. As you all can tell, we have a very empty dais, an absent member and an open seat. So, tonight, we had on the agenda to declare a vacancy. We accepted the resignation of Yessenia Torres, who moved out of the district. They bought a home in another district and is no longer eligible to be on the Board, so we have to, we have to replace her, fill her seat. And so, with that declaration, and with that, I'd like to take the opportunity to extend an invitation. Anyone who would like to get more information about being on the Board, you could contact me through the district website, and we could give you more information. And I see Naisha back there. Please come have a seat. Madam Secretary, would you correct the, correct the roll for Naisha, please?
Naisha Major?
Right here.
Thank you. So, if there is, and if anyone has friends or other parents in the district who are, or any community member that would like more information about the Board seat, please have them reach out to me. Or any of the Board members, but through the district website would be how we'd like that. Item four, the best part of the evening.
Back to the pledge?
To the pledge? Oh, yes. Thank you. We have with us.
Termon.
Termon Elementary.
Where are they?
So, if you would all come up, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, you're fine. I just, I know, I don't know what's happening. I'm always the eight o'clock.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yay! Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I love talking. I'm trying to get in, it's not working.
No, it doesn't. Oh, there you go.
It's not working. I have a kitchen.
All right, and now, Termon Elementary students would like to refer to District Two.
My damn kids.
Graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitude, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Great job, ladies.
Well, we have certificates for all of you, so you're all gonna have to come back up here. And we want to take a picture with you. There's a lot of them, so I'll just call them out, and you guys raise your hand, and if I say your name on, I'm probably gonna be sorry. And I'm gonna be, yeah. You'll just hold it and stand it face out. And you're, and you're Marla. Francis.
They're so cute.
Charlisse Leclerc. William Ruppert.
Oh, it's too cute. My whole heart is not here. My whole heart.
Is Charlisse here? Blake Stafford? Elias Stafford? Anaya Young? Justin Marie?
I'm choking.
Sorry.
I know.
For Jerry.
I'm mint.
Bruce Lynn Archuleta?
Yeah, I don't know.
Anybody rock it? Anaya, Charlisse?
Jeannie Orozco.
Kendall Kirby?
It's okay. Takes me a couple times, but I got it. The rain, I hate it. Times up. Six, ten almost.
Squeeze in.
Ten almost. Look at all their pappy parents.
Squeeze in.
They're so funny. They'll take you pictures. They're so cute. Yay!
Termon.
Yay! You need to feel like fresh and new again. Like you can steal all their energy. You're so awesome.
Well, thank all of you for that. It really is the best part of the night, because the whole reason that we're here is, is, are the kids. That's you guys. We're all here just because of you. You may not think that. You might think that you have to come here for us, but, but we are really here for you. So, I appreciate all of you. And parents, thank you for, for being here and making sure that all the kids are here. Item four.
Did you need to, I don't, did you need to specifically make that statement? You, you referenced it, but I don't know if you specifically said that.
Don't leave.
Just for legality, declaration, and I'll get right to thank you. Declaration of Board Vacancy. The Board of Education of Harrison High School District Two represents, leads, serves district owners according to Colorado Constitution, Section Four, and holds itself accountable to them by committing to act in their best interest and by ensuring that all Board and district action is consistent with law and the Board's policies according to Colorado Revised Statutes. Declaring the vacancy. Harrison High School Two Board of Education declares a director vacancy created by the resignation of Yessenia Torres. Her resignation was accepted at a special Board meeting on April 3, 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Termon Elementary Principals Report.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education, and Dr. Spencer. I'm Jana Thomas. I'm the Assistant Principal at Termon Elementary. Unfortunately, Wendy Kosecki is unable to be here. She's home with bronchitis and a severe sinus infection. She wanted me to send her apologies. She really did want to be here to present all the great things that are happening at Termon. So, fortunately, Candace Green, our Literacy Coach, and I are here, and we are very excited to share the great things that are happening.
I don't have a PowerPoint, do you? They didn't send it to us.
Mm-hmm.
There's something.
All right, thank you very much. All right, as you may or may not know, last year, Termon welcomed a new administrative team, making this year Wendy Kosecki's second year as principal at Termon Elementary, and this is my first year as the Assistant Principal at Termon. So, one of the first things that we did is we got together with our building leadership team and created a new mission and vision statement, along with the new motto. It's not working. Okay, let me just push it. Sorry, I guess our clicker's not working. I apologize. Okay, technical difficulties. Sorry. When I click it here, it's not switching. You gotta turn it on, yeah. All right. Sorry about that. Okay, so, our mission statement is now building a community of lifelong learners who discover the value of their potential. Our vision statement, Termon Elementary will develop a culture of excellence by cultivating character, celebrating diversity, creating community, and providing authentic personalized learning to develop inspired and passionate scholars. And from that, we got our motto, which is excellence without excuses. So, after looking at our achievement data, which we will look over, and seeing that our students really aren't performing where they need to be for meeting state standards, in addition to feedback from our instructional rounds over the past two years, we've come up with our problem of practice is focusing on ensuring that the principles of both gradual release and high-yield instructions, instructional strategies are present, so that our students are getting the support they need to meet those higher expectations. So, as I'll show you shortly, our data is improving, we are making progress, but we still have a ways to go. A little bit about our demographics. At Termon, we are currently at 16% African-American, 43% Hispanic, 28% white, and 8% multiple races. Our enrollment varies between about 265 to 290 throughout the year, with about a 30% mobility rate. Pretty equal between boys and girls, depending on the time of year. As far as other populations, we have, we do have a significant supports needs program, which we have nine students, so that's 3%. Our mild and moderate caseload is about 3.7% of our student population. We have about 9.8% ELL, and 79% of our students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. In addition, one other thing that I just wanted to add that we didn't have on the slide, but as of our most recent testing for gifted and talented, we now, we have 12 students identified for gifted and talented at Termon, so we're very excited about that For faculty and staff, we have 19 full-time teachers for this year. It's kind of interesting at Termon in that our primary grades, we have really a lot larger class sizes, and then we get smaller as we get up into our intermediate grades. And so, for next year, we have been able to allot an additional classroom teacher position to kind of help with those class sizes for our primary grades. Of those teachers, we have three distinguished teachers, and then supporting us CLDE, Literacy Coach, Social Worker, SPED Teacher, SSN Teacher, along with our support staff. All right, so, looking at our school performance framework, right now, we are at 58.1, which is up six points from last year, so we're excited about seeing that increase. Very excited to see that our academic growth does meet state expectations, and we're confident that our academic achievement is, although it's approaching right now, that we are on our way to meeting state expectations for our academic achievement also. So, going a little bit more into our data, our CBMs, we have, this is our three-year trend. So, you know, a couple different things. First of all, when the new administration started last year, they saw a real need for focusing on reading instruction. So, you can see with that focus, there's kind of been a small but steady increase in the reading scores. The writing scores were down, we were up last year, down this year, so we're definitely have that as a focus for next year. We need to get that back up to where we want that. And then, math dropped slightly with that increased focus on reading last year, but this year, we got some interventions back in place, and, and we're headed back where we need to go for math this year. For state testing, very excited to show this slide. Termon increased in five out of the six areas last year. Some of those were small gains, but as you can see, in fifth grade ELA and third grade math, those were pretty significant gains. Our fifth grade math, we were, you know, didn't obviously see the gains that we wanted. Like I said, we knew that that wasn't something that Termon focused on heavily last year as, in terms of meeting student needs, and we've, we already adjusted that for this year, so we're expecting that to definitely be different for this year. In addition to, as I said, we have very small class sizes. To be honest, we have two fifth grade classes that probably could be one. We have 29 students. So, anybody who knows anything about data knows that that really affects that when you, you know, have such a small N. So, for our access scores, we are currently at 42% of our students at the bridging or reaching an expanding level, which is above the district average of 37% for access scores. And then, just a couple other things to note. Our attendance is up from last year at 94%, a little over 94%. And very happy to say that our number of suspensions has gone down 63%. So, you know, you can see two years ago, 19 suspensions, and as of right now, we're down to seven suspensions for this year. Definitely trying to keep our scholars at school with us and doing what we can to make sure we're meeting their needs at, when they are at school. All right, I'm going to pass it over to Candace Green, who'd like to share about our VIP program.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay, so, our VIP program, we have implemented the VIP program and made some improvements this year, which then increased the number of parent volunteers at our school. They have come in, they volunteer throughout the day, they help us with recess, they help us with lunches, but in addition, they help us with field trips, fundraisers, all of our different events that we have in the evenings for our parent involvement, which I'll get to in a minute. And we couldn't do it without our VIPs. We really appreciate them. So, for our activities, we have increased the number of our ELOs in clubs. So, our ELOs are extended learning opportunities for students, where they come in for the tutoring, and it's, we have anywhere from six to, you know, 20 kids that'll come in. We put them in programs, pull them into small groups, and give them the support that they need, so they can help get caught up and, and excel. So, we both have it for remedial and for enrichment, and then we have a lot of different clubs. And this coming school year, we are going to be adding the Girl Scouts. They'll be doing a troop at our school. In addition, we're hoping to have the Super School News lead our morning announcements next year, where they will plan every morning, a kind of a news-type announcement program that the kids can watch on our brand-new TVs that'll be in each room for our learning For our events, we also established a new committee this year called the Parent Involvement Committee. We call it PIC. And through that, we have, we set a goal to have at least one parent involvement event every month, where we invited all the families, we feed them dinner, and enjoy, and sit down and enjoy a nice dinner with them, and make sure that everybody leaves with some really neat things like books and stuff. But we, as you can see, exceeded our goal, and we had one almost every single month throughout the year. Our teachers have been great in our VIPs in supporting these things. Most events included providing them, like I said, a complimentary, complimentary dinner for all families who attended, and we are happy to say that we were able to give away hundreds of books and put them into the hands of our scholars. Our community partners is growing. Each year, we have Deerfield Hills Community Center that houses our after-school program in our school in the afternoons and evenings. We have CPCD, which is the preschool, that housed in our building. Nine of our classrooms are dedicated to CPCD and give these kids a little extra boost before they come into kindergarten. Colorado College partners with us, and their soccer team will be coming in next year and reading with kids. We have the US Navy that has been our partner this year. They've come out for Read Across America, they came out for Veterans Day, and the USS Colorado, we had four crew members visiting the state, and so they came to our school and did an entire presentation with our scholars, and then we, after we dismissed the kindergarten through third graders back to class, they spent another 30 minutes with our fourth and fifth graders and just let them ask questions. It was powerful. And then, Kaiser Permanente is our grant that we received, and that is our healthy school grant. And then, Pike Peak United Way is a new partner. They participate in Read Across America, and we're really excited. They'll be participating in our STEM Night coming up and other things. And Air Force Academy is also a participant in our STEM Nights.
All right, so, we have prepared a short video that, how is it? The click is not. Okay, sorry. The link doesn't look like it's on there. So, just a short.
Come out of the PowerPoint. Is it on there? Oh.
It's not showing though.
Let me see.
I'm sorry. So, it was embedded in the PowerPoint?
Is it embedded?
It's supposed to be, but it's not showing up.
Doing, doing, doing. 270. I think Kim has.
It's on that, it's on that slide on ours. See how it pops up there?
At Centennial, I think there's all of us.
Well, we have some great things showing our staff and scholars, but we're hiding it from you to build suspense.
Great music, though, isn't it?
Let them act it out.
Thank you so much.
It's gonna get stuck in my head all night long. I'll be singing this song.
It's gonna be driving me crazy.
Me too.
Oh, just kidding.
So close.
We are a community.
Here at Termon, we are good friends to each other.
We are good friends because we're kind to each other.
We are good friends because we invite people to play with us.
We are good friends because we take care of all the kids.
We are a team. We are problem solvers.
Congratulations. Today's your day. You're off to great places. You're off and away.
We are readers.
We are mathematicians.
I am a mathematician because I know all my multiplication and division facts.
We are scientists.
Last quarter, we completed a unit on severe weather.
Here at Termon, we are.
Okay, I used contrast because I pressed dark here, and I pressed the light here, so it created a contrast.
In my self-portrait, I created pattern in my shirt by going purple, blue, purple, blue over and over again, and then I showed perspective in my trees by it getting smaller as it goes back.
At Termon, we are athletes.
We are physicists.
We are news anchors for Termon Elementary.
How is everyone doing?
I'm Alejandra.
And I'm Josep.
And we are from Termon Elementary in Colorado Springs.
We have G F B. We are. 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 We are.
We are physicists.
We are news anchors for Terrence Elementary.
How is everyone doing? I am Alejandra.
And I'm Josep.
And we are from Terrence Elementary in Colorado Springs.
That was awesome.
We are G F B one.
All right, so that's what we have for you tonight. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share with you some of the great things happening at Terrence. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, thank you for being here tonight, taking time and getting all the parents and kids here. At the risk of just taking over the mic, I'll offer you guys for a shot at the-
We give them a hard time.
I'm accused of just taking all the questions in here. Well, you said what I was gonna say, you said what I was gonna say, so I always will afford them and then I'll come up with some new stuff, so go ahead.
He thinks he's in charge. So we really just want to say thank you to our parents and the staff and the faculty and of course our students. Because it's always really exciting when I get here, I'm exhausted and then you guys come in and I'm like, yay, students! So I appreciate all your hard work and we can't, it doesn't matter, we're not here for anyone but you guys, so thank you for showing up tonight.
Linda?
Ditto.
Great.
That's why only one person can talk.
Well, sometimes it's difficult to connect with all of the constituents, so, and I know that we probably have this information. We get newsletters forwarded to us, but if you would contact Norma and Norma, if you would pass along the information, the invitation to the parent nights, that would be great. I don't know that any or all of us can necessarily always attend, but I would, I always would like to know when those are to- So please, if you would, if you would extend those invitations.
Absolutely, I will extend an invitation right now to our STEAM Night, which is May 24th. From 4:30 to 6:30 PM.
And we would definitely love to have anybody join us at those nights. We have a lot of fun, a lot of interacting with the kids and it is a great time, so we would love to have you.
Great, thank you. And always an opportunity to talk to, to talk to constituents is, is great. One thing, and this is probably more for, and I'm gonna say Dr. Smith, but I, there's another-
Candace Green or Jana Thomas?
No, 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 the-
Oh, for yes, for Ms. Kozensky.
Kozensky, is that a, is that a new? It's not on our agenda, is it?
It says Smith there, oh, I apologize.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if there was a marriage that I missed or something happened, I was like, is Smith- Smith is just easier to say, so, so it may be more, more directed towards her, but I'm very interested and this is gonna be a repetition through, uh, so if there's other principals out there that are gonna pick up on this, the student ba-, or the site-based budgeting, how do you see that changing or working in your-
Well, I definitely, I mean, you know, of course the principal does do most of that, but I was obviously in some of that. And I know for us at Terrence, the site-based budgeting is what allowed us to get, you know, that extra teacher. Because we had, you know, when you look at our class sizes, when you just take the student-to-teacher ratio, it didn't look too bad, but because we had that unequal, you know, so heavy in primary, our kindergarten and first grade classes were huge and then we had small intermediate grades, but we didn't want to combine fifth grade and end up with 32 fifth graders, so it was, it was difficult and it was a challenge. This year, we used our literacy coach and she, she supported. She would pull out groups from both kindergarten and first grade and help provide some of that first instruction to lower that class size. So we were able to meet student needs, but the, the site-based budgeting has really allowed us to plan ahead for that, knowing that that's a trend that we've had at Terrence. And so we're planning on, you know, hiring that primary teacher so that we can already have that in place, no lost instructional time and, and we're ready to get going. So I know for us, that has definitely been, that, that's probably the biggest bonus that I've seen right away.
Good, yeah, nice to, nice to hear that there's positive. So that's gonna be a common theme with all the, you don't necessarily put it in your presentation, but I'll always want to see what, uh, how you're using that, how it affects you and, and the change in that, so that was all I had, thank you for stepping in real-
Thank you very much. Yay! Clapping is awesome.
We have no comments from the public tonight, so we will move on to item five, 5.1, communicating with the public. It's always a tough, a tough act to follow, the schools, you know, there's presentations of the kids. But, you're up, so tonight we have Harrison District 2 Credit Union. Mr. Jensen is the manager and CEO and a couple of board members here, welcome.
Why does this smell like cookies? It smells like cookies.
And the room clearing out is really not you guys, it's, it's always the, the first act to follow, the, a school is, it's a tough one, so.
Go Terrence!
All right, well, thank you very much to the school board for having us. My name's Nick Jensen, I'm the manager of the credit union. To begin, I just want to quickly echo something that you said earlier, Mr. President. You mentioned to the students that the school board is here for them. And in a lot of ways, the credit union really is as well. So the credit union serves, oh wow, I lost my sledge. There it is. You just had to get up. So the credit union serves the entire District 2 community. Any student, staff member, employee, or family member is eligible for membership with us. And we've been a partner of the school district for 60 years, so that's quite a good run. So essentially, the credit union is a full-service, member-owned, not-for-profit, financial cooperative. So that's a whole lot of words to say that we are just your, your average neighborhood financial institution. Though we are very small, we offer many of the same services as much larger institutions do through the use of strategic partnerships, much like the one we share with the school district. As a credit union, we exist not to be as profitable as we can and not to serve our bottom line, but instead to offer as many free or low-cost services as possible. So if there is a fee for something, generally that's just going to cover our cost. If I can give you something for free, I'm gonna do that as often as possible. And if I can't do it, I'm going to find someone who can. And again, as a small credit union, we're able to partner with credit union-owned service organizations that can offer you things like investment planning, retirement planning, mortgages, student loan consolidation, things of that nature. And again, our goal is always going to be to save you, the member, as much money as we possibly can while offering you high-quality financial services. I, I don't know that I have much else to say, I'm gonna turn it over to one of my board members in a moment and then I'll be happy to take board questions. But if I could just say again, our core purpose is really to put as much back into the community as we possibly can. It is truly our goal to help more than anything. We always are looking out for our members, we want to contribute to your financial success. We want to contribute to, to your future and we want to contribute to the community. That, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McKay.
I always feel at home, I worked in Harrison as assistant superintendent for human resources for 17 years, from 1980 until 17 years later. I just want you to know that I'm so impressed with that group. I was here when Terrence opened, we were part of that group when they, when they opened. My heart will always be with the people in the Harrison School District. We are there to provide service, not only to the students, but to the staff. We try to give you the best opportunities to succeed. And I wanna, I wanna relate one story that I think is very appropriate. We had one teacher and her name was Mrs. Gonzalez. And she had a student in her class and she saw some potentials in that student that was not coming out. He was always trying to be, joking about his life and so forth and so. Finally, she pulled him aside one day and said, "You need to do better, you're not here to make jokes. You need to get better, you need to use those facilities that you have." And one of the things that he did, he took her to task and he started studying. And he got a scholarship from both Harrison, the Harrison Scholarship Foundation, we started that, we started that. And we've given over a million dollars to our students here and that, you know, that really pleases me. But anyway, years later, we were having a meeting at one of the hotels downtown. And this man came up to me and he said, "Is Mrs. Gonzalez in that, with that meeting?" And I said, "Yes." He said, "I need to talk to her." I said, "Well, who are you?" He said, "I, I used to be one of her students." And so I said, "Okay," and I went in and showed him. And he came in and he said to her, "Do you remember me?" And she, he said, "No, I don't think so." And he cited some incidents that he, that had occurred. "Oh, yes, I remember, you were the guy that we had a problem with." He said, "I want you to know, I just completed lawyer school." He said, "I'm a lawyer now." And he said, "It took me twice to pass, to pass my bar exam." He said, "But I owe, I owe all of that to Harrison and you." And you know what bothered me about that was that we don't realize that in a lot of our students that have those potentials. But thank you teachers for what you do. You are the creator of good students here. And there are scholarships available with Harrison, there are scholarships available with your foundation, sir. And we do a lot for our students. We'll be having a meeting tomorrow and if you know of some students that want some scholarship, you know, you need, you need to encourage them to come to us. Because I think the best opportunity you'll ever have to get cheap scholarship money is from us. I will do my best to make sure that Harrison, I saw a principal over there from Sootmore Hill that wasn't here when I- But anyway, I'll do my best to make sure that our students from Harrison get an opportunity to get a scholarship from us. We believe that Harrison provides the best opportunity for students that are here and will continue to grow our community by ensuring that our students get their education and get the service that they need. I'm delighted to be a part of this district, I will al-, Harrison will always live in my heart. I don't live in the district, but you wouldn't know it by the participation, but I'm involved with a lot of things that's in this district. Tell your students that Harrison's credit union, as well as the Harrison Foundation, offer scholarship. Take advantage of that and make sure that you get a part of whatever is available out there so they can continue further their education. I will be, do my best to make sure that you get a great opportunity to get some support from both of those organizations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What questions does the board have for me, if any?
Well, as always, I will defer to anyone else who has, no, anything? Well-
No, I told Naeja if she was paying attention so she can go out and get that money right away.
Well, I, one of, yeah, something I wanted to talk about was, directly connected, I'll get that just in a sec. The, the credit union's a very unique partner. Most, most partners have directly have contact with, with the kids every day in schools in some fashion or another. And in, by and large, there are more community organizations that have, take a broad scope and take a cross-section of, of Harrison. Harrison District, the credit union lives to serve the specific district. I have the, a unique opportunity to be a, a member of it, kind of unique to the board a little bit, a member of the credit union. So I've participated in some of the, the benefits that the credit union has to offer and, and they're, if anybody doesn't use them as a financial institution, they, they, they should really probably consider looking into it because there are some great advantages as a, as a member, I've, I can say that personally. The scholarships are, are great. One thing that we always do as a board, we want to, the, the, a communication with the partner. One, how do we connect with you that we can help you serve maybe a greater cross-section? Either with, I didn't know about until very recently that a student could be a member just by being a student. And I was gonna ask Naeja if she knew that just being a scholar, pardon, a scholar in Harrison, that she could participate in, as a member in the Harrison Federal Credit Union.
And see, I did not. And I thought Harrison, I knew Harrison School District gave scholarships to match scholarships that you have previously gotten as a senior, up to a certain amount. And I wasn't, I didn't even realize there was another layer to that. And then on top of that, being able to be a part of something bigger, so that's very surprising and I hope to communicate that to the people around me as well.
So maybe there's an opportunity for us to, to communicate with, with the kids, maybe independently. Somehow that may be an opportunity to, to explore. Obviously, our, our, our rep didn't, didn't know, so something we found out. Scholarships are fantastic, that directly affects kids. A million dollars in, in over 60 years is, is just, that's outstanding. All of those lives, you hear, I was a, I was a former Harrison student, so I knew as a kid, my teachers, and now I see it from a little bit different perspective. So I'm not an attorney, I maybe haven't aspired to, to the-
I will tell you that we had, we had six applications, we were gonna give four, four, four jobs here. They were so good, we gave them all.
There you go.
Yeah, yes. So that's really all I have. What can we do as a board to help you as a, as a, as a partner?
In my experience, I would say that as a smaller financial institution, the most powerful marketing tool for us is definitely word of mouth. So if you know someone that can use a credit union service, bring it up in conversation if it makes sense. We've been making a more concerted effort to kind of reach out to the schools, to reach out to students and to kind of do our part to get the word out. And again, I would just say, I mean, let's all keep doing what we're doing and make sure that those lines of communication do remain open and that we are trying to get the word out kind of collectively.
Sure, and I know that you're a full-service credit union, is there an element, checking, loans, is there something? If we, if we were to promote a single, a single item, what would, what message would, is there something that, that we would, would promote? Car, the great car loan or, or the, is the checking account the best savings? How do, what would you, what would, if there was a key to that?
Again, as I said earlier, everything is much cheaper than you would find at someplace else, absolutely. We offer a rate-match program if you find-
Mortgage?
We do offer mortgage services actually, in fact, right now we're offering a refinance promotion on 10 and 15-year mortgages with a flat $995 closing cost.
If anybody's closed a, a home loan recently, that's, that's very attractive, but so-
Yeah, absolutely, and there are promotional rates to go with that as well. We, our board looks at our rates every month, we try to keep our loan rates as competitive as possible. We're interested in saving people as much money as we can because every dollar we save, you can then go back into the community in some other way, absolutely. As far as one particular product, I, it's gonna depend on that individual situation, but odds are, we have something that can help.
Sure, and you offer credit cards?
Absolutely.
Checking, yeah, full service, so.
Again, if there's something that we don't offer in-house, we have a credit union partner that can offer it for a very low, if not free, rate.
Awesome, thank you. That's all I had for you guys.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you being here tonight. 6.1, we have no comment this evening. Do we have, so we have 5.202, our scholar board representative, Naeja Major, who made it this evening. And now you know you could be a member of the credit union, all the, all the services and-
I wish I would have liked, this would have came to my brain when they were still in here, but I'd love to see them at like orientations or school registries when mom is there because she has to sign paperwork and you're there and that is, I think that's even better than word of mouth because everyone has to go enroll for school. So then at least one person is, in that family is going to know about what this is and that, that would be fantastic.
That's a perspective that we, that we miss sometimes without having you here, so.
As soon as he walked out, I was like, oh!
Maybe we should email them that comment.
And it shouldn't even just be Sierra, it should be Harrison and it should be like, it should come to our necessity. Like a moment.
Quite often, so I can pass that along to-
He must have more money than us.
All right, well, on the super awesome Naeja's side of everything. The SAT, the PSAT and the Accuplacer have just up and passed and everyone loves those. Our seniors took their Accuplacer and they're ready to graduate. I'm super proud of our graduation rate this year and every year. It's been over 90%, I've been at Sierra for all of my years and I'm just like, yes. They always give me reasons to brag on them and I absolutely love it. Prom is the 28th, that is the biggest high school event there is, and that's my opinion. And so I am super excited to see how this is going to unravel. We decided it's going to be at the Hotel Elegant and the theme is "Under the Big Top" and that's just a fancy way of saying it's a carnival. On a little bit more of the serious side, one of the freshman teachers named Sergeant was talking to, or Sergeant and I had a conversation about all of the different political things that are going on in the world that are like concerning our students. Not too long ago, there was a little bit of buzz about teachers and how much they are getting paid or how much they're not getting paid. And just as a student, these are just things you hear and things that are, they just kick up some dust. And as someone who wants to go into post-secondary education, when I graduate high school, it's something I really listened to, it's something I really picked up on. And so it is being tossed around in the air. We come this next year, make a club that deals with controversial issues and like helps us find a way to talk about these things and then in turn use them to gain knowledge and better prepare ourselves for when someone is, we are talking about this so we can intelligently address situations like that. If that makes sense to anybody but me. Sports, our girls tennis team are kicking butt. All of our other sports teams are going into preseason, our big like basketball and girls volleyball, I think they're starting preseason soon. Girls tennis is about to end, but they have been doing awesome and I am super proud of all of them. I wish I was athletically inclined. Our Spirit Week is this week, we have been doing spirit things all week, starting with, I think it was Crazy Hair Day. Yes, I mean, I'm already on there. And it's gonna end with our school spirit and then we are going to have our assembly, that is all of our prom committee combined with our senior decision day. And senior decision day is just where we acknowledge all of our seniors and we say, like all of the colleges that they got accepted to and on that day, they decide where they're going to college, whether they're going to go to the military, just in community college, we acknowledge them and we congratulate them because getting in a higher education is important, very important. Yes. And then now that I've just learned about this credit union, I am super excited to communicate that to people around me, like it is my junior year- that to people around me, like, it is my junior year, so I got a whole nother year to talk to everyone all about it. And I'm super excited. And then hopefully, that trickles down to the underclassmen that are going to be upperclassmen this coming year because college is expensive. And so it's really good to be informed about what is going to help you succeed. But I think that's all I got. Yay!
All right. Well, thank you. And it really is beneficial to have some knowledge. One thing that I've thought about reaching out to the credit union is some financial-type classes. I know checkbooks have really gone by the way. Side with apps, they are developing an app they didn't talk about that'll soon be available to staff. I know that online applications are, that's how the world runs now. So if you don't have an app, you're probably behind the curve, so they're developing that. Very attractive rates.
Well, I want to be invited to the controversy club because that sounds pretty awesome. I'm just saying. Because I think taking time to empower students about what's happening in an educated manner is really important, so, thanks.
Well, I think we don't talk about a release somehow.
Yeah.
For, a lot of the scholars don't know how to express themselves, and I think that is something that they could learn to express themselves in a way that's productive and not disruptive. So, awesome. I'm glad that that was your idea. Anybody else? No? Linda? Thank you, Naisha. Appreciate your perspective.
Enthusiasm.
Item seven, superintendent's consent agenda. We have item 7.1 Personnel Report. Has everyone had a chance to review the personnel report? Are there any questions?
Nope.
No.
No? The only thing that I wanted to, that I kind of noticed, I didn't see any administrative positions on there. Does that, does the report hit admin, or is it only certified in ESB?
It's for certified staff based on state regulations.
Okay.
Yes.
I was just curious because I had heard an announcement, and I didn't see it, and was just curious as to the difference in the report, so.
So the board signs licensed staff contracts or agree to that.
My purview comes into play with administrative contracts.
Okay. That answers why they're not on there. And you'd think that after four years on the board, I probably would have realized that before now, but sometimes you take a fresh look at things and have a question. So, financial statement and donations. Anybody have any questions on? No?
No.
Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Sweet.
Someone, do I get to read it? Is that what everyone's waiting for? I move to approve.
Yeah.
Superintendent's consent, as stated.
It's been moved by Mrs. Roscoe and seconded by...
We need more people.
Mrs. Pugh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
Sweet.
Item eight, renewal of Aspen Group contract. This initially goes on consent agenda, but under what I believe is clear financial transparency, interactions with the board, I wanted to have it its own agenda item, and we could talk about what that is. As a businessman, I look at every single penny, and as board president, I look at every single penny and question, is there value to this? Is there value for what we get? And we had some, several discussions about the value. We do, it's not just automatic, we're going to use them. And after much discussion...
I was simply going to say, I suspect they do not know what the contract is in reference to. This would be the group that helps us maintain the coherence governance model that we function under, quite different than the process used by many other boards. And obviously, I thought it was worthwhile. I was on the board when we brought it into existence here. And my thought on it is that I think it's a very functional thing, but I'm not so sure how intuitive it is. And so having that group continue to keep us on track and rethinking and looking at stuff helps us hold to the model and have productive meetings, you know, the kind of relationships that can keep focuses on kids and not get into adult issues and other disruptions that may occur in other board scenarios.
They also help facilitate board self-assessment, team building if we require that of them, community connections, engagements, and anything that we want to put on an agenda for them. So from my perspective, I think there is a great value to a board to sit down with a group that can look in from the outside and lend perspective. So just so that it's discussed in a public meeting and why we make the choice, why we believe it's valuable, they're taxpayer dollars, and we want to be good stewards of that. So with that, Jeanie, would you like to...
No, I mean, just so everyone that's left in the room is aware, we really discussed this at great length in spending those dollars and what that looks like, but being a new board member, recognizing as we see other boards and how they function, if you want us in your schools asking you questions, this group really keeps us in line with focusing on our youth and not getting down in the weeds and talking about things that really aren't in the best interest of our students. And so after looking at that, we've asked some things from them, but really paying attention to how do we best serve our youth and each other in our district and our constituents. We really feel like Aspen Group provides us the ability to move forward intentionally and not just checkboxes. And so we really value what they bring to the table, so.
Well, and they review ongoing, the crux of our job is to, is for accountability. And reviewing the indicators and results reports and providing feedback on those throughout the year is often a great insight for us, too. I know it occasionally creates some discussion. I would maybe not say heated, but certainly some pointed discussion, points, valid points. So with that, I would recommend renewing their contract for another year. So with that, with no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the renewal of the Aspen Group contract.
I second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Pugh, seconded by Mrs. Roscoe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. And I will take that opportunity to...
I can't open the board calendar.
Oh, I did on the wrong. So moving to item nine, board consent agenda. Approval of the 2018-2019 board schedule calendar. Are there any changes? Have you guys had a chance to review the, any conflicts or...
We're good.
Approval of the minutes, board minutes. Do we have changes? Item 9.02.
I looked at them pretty thoroughly prior to the past couple days and found a couple of corrections, and they've been made. What I see, to me, was pretty correct.
Jeanie, any additions to...
No.
Well, we have items 9.3, 0.4, 0.5, 0.6, 0.7, 0.8, all operational expectation indicators. Several of those are carryovers from multiple meetings that we've hashed and rehashed and have come to an agreement on what we would like. And the board has no further changes to any of those. Any further discussion on any of the indicators? Would you guys like to talk about the...
No, please no.
Please no? Anybody want to talk about OE 11 again? No? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, my turn. I move to approve the board consent agenda items as stated.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Roscoe, seconded by Mrs. Pugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries.
We're good. That's what happens when you work late. You don't know how to act anymore.
Item 10, monitoring board performance. Legislative updates. Nothing, Jeanie, or...
I get nothing.
Jeanie, I did sign us up for the CASB. I'll forward the regional meeting. There's some specific items as legislative liaison. I'll forward that to you. I RSVP'd for both of us just to reserve a spot, so if you're able to, but I'll forward that information to you.
Thank you.
The connection with CASB is eye-opening. If you've never been involved with the legislator in any fashion, what happens at the Capitol is, well, beyond me personally, but it's amazing to listen to and quite valuable to have Matt Cook. And we volunteered our boardroom for the Region Six presidents groups to meet. So we get to meet with multiple districts and have some discussion.
And our local representative will be here this Saturday at Ivy Wild to answer any questions about what's happened in legislative this last session, and that's open to the public. So I think it's 10 to 12. Don't quote me.
Good. Annual work plan? I know that from the draft, there were a couple of changes, and those have been updated in board docs. Any other changes or comments about the board annual work plan?
No.
I have no changes. With that, is there, do we have any other...
Did you want to mention the convention at all?
Not tonight. We'll add that to the agenda for a work session, and then we'll kind of recap it in the May meeting.
Perfect.
Linda's brought up the point that we had the board, several of the board members attended the National School Board Convention, and one of the things that we want to do about that is come back with a recap as to, one, why we do it. Is there, again, value in the money that we spend to do this? And what we gain and the insight that we get from that? So that'll be an agenda item for our next work session, and we'll have a kind of a culmination of that at the May regular board meeting. Any other items of discussion?
Can we clap now?
Naisha, was that a me, or glasses? No? Well, with no further business, we're adjourned.